Uba River Lives Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Intergoizable, delivering justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment, Mandy.
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on any subject matter that is not on the meeting agenda and is within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comment periods are limited to three minutes per person, and the total amount of time for public comment is 15 minutes. Persons participating by way of video conference or teleconference shall ensure their audio is muted at all times except when the board chair announces public comment periods. At those designated times, members of the public wishing to speak shall label their audio and state their name for the record. When multiple members of the public wish to speak, the clerk will determine the order of speakers and announce their names accordingly. To ensure proper conduct, the board reserves the right to mute the audio and video of any member of the public violating generally accepted principles and acronyms of official public meeting. Do we have any in-person?
Anyone from the public wish to speak? None? Okay.
No virtual.
None virtual. All right. Consent items.
I'd move to approve.
All second.
All right. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on consent? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Consent items passed. Discussion items, item four, consider adoption of resolution 2025-34, certifying the final joint environmental impact report for the Uba River Development Project, FERC re-licensing, and Narrows Hydroelectric Project FERC re-licensing. Willie.
Well, good morning, Board. As you're well aware, we've been working on our FERC re-licensing for nearly 15 years now, and this action meets the state regulations for environmental review for this board to accept a new FERC license for both the YRDP, the Uba River Development Project, and the Narrows Project. And it also allows the state board, State Water Resources Control Board, to issue a water quality certification under Section 401 of the Clean Water Act. And this resolution includes the following actions: It certifies the final EIR, it adopts the SEQA findings, it adopts the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, and it authorizes the general manager to accept new FERC licenses for both the YRDP and Narrows projects, as long as they are consistent with the proposed project or alternative one included in this EIR. If not consistent, we will come back to you for further review and approval. And I will also let you know that this meets the state requirements for environmental review. And when I say if FERC issues a license that's not consistent with an alternative or proposed project included in the EIR, we will come back to you for further review, meaning potential further environmental review and a new resolution. If they do issue something consistent with one of these two alternatives, then we will just accept the license, and you're authorizing me to do so. I will remind you also that this is just the state side. There's still the federal side, the whole NEPA side that needs to be done. That's in FERC's hands at this point. There's no timeline or requirement for FERC to act on that, so the federal side could take several years. So this does, however, meet the California SEQA requirements for the state water board to issue our water quality certification by December 29th. We applied last year, December 29th. They have one year to issue that water quality certification, so we needed to get the SEQA done so that they could issue that water quality certification. That's primarily why we're bringing this today.
All right. Any questions of the directors?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I just, it's a lot. There's a 400 and some odd page document to review from Friday till now or Thursday till now, but I just had a couple of questions. Neither one of our options that we're presenting are going to meet the requirement to provide 55% of unimpaired flow to the middle Uba River. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So these are alternatives to what another plan is asking for?
Yeah, the alternatives you are allowing me to accept if FERC issues them are our proposed project or alternative one. Both are consistent with the continuation of operation of the Uba River Development Project and the Narrows Project as we proposed.
Okay. And then I did want to say thank you guys for sending out all of these engagement letters, because when you look at the letters we received from other people about this adoption, they were all, the first line is, "Thank you for engaging us." So appreciate you being responsible in that and engaging the local tribes and everybody that's partners in that watershed. So I didn't see any issues on the local tribes, but they're, yeah, everything else seems like, sorry, I'm going through my notes here while I'm doing this. Everything else seems like there could be some pretty big contingencies from Nevada irrigation to PG&E, things like that. Are those expected in this process, or is it expected that we might make change or propose something that makes changes for other water users?
Yeah, as part of the additional information requests that we received from FERC in 2021, we responded with a potential contribution, a proposal, where FERC could have the upstream projects provide water in the lower Uba River or habitat and temperature mitigation. That would be alternative one. That's the environmentally superior alternative. Our proposed project does not include that option. That is at FERC's discretion. That's why we have two alternatives that you're authorizing me to accept, is one our proposed project, and the other is alternative one, which does have a contribution from the upstream projects.
Okay. And on the environmentalist side, there's a pretty lengthy report in here, about Inglebri, I guess, but I don't see any issue there. So that concludes my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? None? Any comments from the public? I'm seeing none. I would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve.
All second.
All actions requested by staff.
Motion's been made in seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Great. Passes. Item five, receive a presentation on the classification of compensation study for unrepresented employees. I'll leave it. I'm not going to read the rest of that. Who's doing this one? Teresa? Virtually. She's going to do it virtually. And Willie. Oh, no, no. All right, Teresa, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, got you. Great.
Great. Okay. And can you see the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Great. It's working. Okay. Good morning, board members. Sorry I couldn't be there on site today. We do have the remaining HR staff there on site, Nicole Demay, our senior HR analyst, and then Lakin Shatner, who is our HR technician, and then supporting online is Jim Matrician, our organizational development officer. So I'm here to present the classification and compensation study for our unrepresented employees. And the purpose of the presentation, it's to summarize the classification and compensation study. It's to present findings and recommendations, and then it's to request board approval. That's for the revised classifications, specifications, the job titles. We're requesting two new full-time employees, and then requesting approval of the amended 25, 26 salary schedule, and then one-time payments for non-exempt designated employees, which we'll talk about here in a future slide. So the study background, this is the first classification and compensation study that we've ever conducted for our unrepresented staff, and that's in our agency's nearly 10-year history. So we're looking at this as a really significant milestone for us. You all are really accustomed to seeing these similar studies and recommendations when we negotiate with our represented employee group, IDEW. But again, this marks the first time we've done this review for nonrepresented, non-union employees. So I wanted to just quickly thank Willie, Terry, and the entire executive team for supporting us to this point. So we're glad to be here. HR is pleased to present this. We really believe that this new structure will serve both the agency and our employees well for years to come. So that said, we went through an RFP process in the spring of 2024. We selected Gallagher and Associates to do the study. Gallagher is well-known through the state. They've worked with many similar districts and local government agencies, so they're really familiar with this process. The main objective of the study, it was to ensure that employee roles are clearly defined, salaries are fair, competitive, and they're aligned with the work being performed. I think, again, that's especially important in an agency like ours where this has never been done, and it's to help kind of establish that consistency and equity for all employees. So the next slide, classification study overview. So the study started with the classification phase. It's phase one, and that was a review of all of our current job descriptions. We had about 79 of them. It was supported by information questionnaires to our employees, and then interviews with each employee, and then manager and HR input to finalize those job descriptions. That resulted in 34 title changes, eight reclassifications, and then 10 new positions for future use. I think 34 title changes might sound like a lot, but in many of the title changes, it actually included what we're establishing as a classification series, and that's where we add, it's industry standard, a one, two, senior level of the same position. And what that means is, for instance, the Level One, it's really designed for somebody who's an entry-level candidate who may not meet the full scope of knowledge or have the experience, but they demonstrate the potential to grow into the role. Whereas the Level Two represents the fully-trained journey-level employee who performs a complete range of duties very independently. And then senior levels are used in rare occasions, and they perform at advanced journey level, little to no direction, and they oversee junior-level staff for the most part. And having that new structure, the one, two senior, really allows HR recruitment flexibility, because by having that one, two, the agency can attract a wider pool of candidates. That's both those who are ready to perform at the journey level, and then those who are earlier in their careers but can be trained. And the structure also provides a built-in career ladder, so employees who are hired at the entry level can progress to the journey level once they gain that necessary experience and skills, and that helps support retention and staff development. This slide is just kind of showing you an example of that, the title changes and the reclassifications. This is all listed in your report, but just wanted to put this out there for the public, kind of point out one of the title changes. The first one there is the Information Security Analyst. Gallagher and Associates told us no industry standard is, we call those cybersecurity analysts. And then again, we added that one, two level as well, so we have that flexibility to hire in whichever level we see fit. And then reclassification examples are up here as well, just taking, for example, that last one, the Hydro Engineer Senior. It was recommended that the current incumbent is reclassified to a Principal Engineer, which is one level above a senior, and that's really to recognize that current incumbent's subject matter expertise on dam safety. So this next slide, as noted in the previous one, 10 new future positions have been added to the structure, and that's to support the agency's evolving workforce and then ensure flexibility for future needs. So today, we're actually requesting use of two of those positions with board action, and that's one full-time employee for the Director of Administration, and then one full-time employee for a Grants Program Manager. And then the study also identified eight positions which are currently designated as exempt positions, and that should be reclassified as non-exempt under the Fair Labor Standards Act, and that's because they don't meet the criteria for exemption based on the professional duties test. So these positions will actually become eligible for overtime compensation for hours worked in excess of eight hours in a day or 40 hours in a work week. So these positions are primarily administrative, and some of them are entry-level in nature. They don't exercise the level of independent judgment or discretion that are required to qualify for an exempt status. And so to address the period during which these positions were incorrectly designated as exempt, we're recommending a one-time payment in its equivalent to 2.5% of base salary for those employees, and that totals approximately $21,000. The next slide is the compensation study overview. So this is the second phase of the study. It's the compensation portion where the consultant goes out on the market and surveys our comparator agencies to see how we match up. We have about 79 classifications. We surveyed 54 of those using the comparator agencies and the comparison elements which were listed in our board-approved compensation philosophy policy. I think it's important just to point out here that when comparing our jobs, the methodology that the consultant used, it isn't just title-to-title. The consultant looks at a variety of things to get the best possible match, and that includes what's listed up here, the typical job duties, scope and complexity, education experience, responsibility, and authority. Next slide is data collected. So the consultant collected info on top monthly base salary and total compensation, and they provided us with calculations on the mean and the median. I'm sure you're aware, the mean is the sum of the data divided by the number of matches, whereas the median is the midpoint of all the data with 50% of data points below and 50% of data points above. So we use the median because the median is not skewed by really, really high salaries or low salaries. So then the market findings and fiscal impact, it's pretty straightforward here. Market findings, the base salaries for us, it showed that we're about 3.6% below market median on average, and then for total compensation, we're about 0.9% above the market. And so what that means for us fiscally is we're suggesting or requesting salary adjustments. Those are listed in that amended salary schedule, which equates to about 2.8% of total payroll, which is a total of about $480,000. In addition to that, a one-time FLSA payments, which total about, well, total 21,686. And then I just wanted to point out here that this aligns with strategic priority number five, which is to develop organizational capabilities to support operations. Then our last slide here is the next steps. So you have the written report before you, the amended salary schedule, and then this presentation. So what we're requesting is board approval of the amended salary schedule with an effective date of November 23rd, and then approval of the one-time FLSA payments. And then, again, I should have mentioned, the effective date of November 23rd for the salary schedule, that's to allow HR and finance enough time to actually process the necessary adjustments, because there's about 81 employees. And I just wanted to clarify, the general manager and the general counsel positions are included on the amended salary schedule, but their salaries are unchanged from what they were before this. They were not part of any recommendations for any changes. And then just last point here is that Human Resources will be returning to this board in the coming months with a resolution that outlines our employee benefits and salaries all in one place. It's modeled after an MOU but specific to nonrepresented employees. So you should be seeing us again in the next couple of months. That's my presentation. I'll take any questions.
Right. Thank you, Teresa. Nice presentation. Is there any questions?
Through the chair.
Yep.
Thank you, Teresa, for the presentation. My question is on the 10 new classifications and the different levels. Do we have a projection of what that's going to cost us in the long run per year? Because right now, it's going to be $480,000 this year, but there's going to be people that are stepping into those roles as we go through each year. Do you happen to know?
That's correct. But no, I don't have a projection, but I can get that and certainly get it over to you. Can work with partners on that.
Just so I can have a reference for the next salary study and the next time we do a compensation look. And then on the 10 new classifications, is that 10 additional to the two that we're going to approve today, or 10 including that two?
Yes, 10 total.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Didn't see that, you know, all of the people involved have gone to this effort to make sure that we're compensating people fairly and well and attracting the best people and keeping them. So good work.
I mirror your comment. It's great that we can provide great jobs to people right here in Uba County, and people really want to come and work for the water agency. So we attract good quality people. We have AJ Hayer back here. He's been coming to every meeting. He is a go-getter young man that works at Caltrans, and he wants to work at the water agency. So we're attracting good quality people that want to work here. So I think it's great that we've done this. With that, is there any public comment on this item? None? I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Motion passes. Item six, consider adoption of resolution 2025-32, approving a memorandum of agreement with US Army Corps of Engineers to fund expedited permit review. And this is going to be presented by Sammy.
Good morning.
You're already up there.
Yes. Was anticipating. Good morning, Chairman Messick, members of the board, Sammy Knoll, Uba Water's Flood Risk Manager. Now that you approve that, thank you for cutting a word out of my title. I am here regarding the memorandum of agreement with the US Army Corps of Engineers. Entering into that would allow Uba Water to provide funding, an initial fund of up to $650,000 to the Army Corps to obtain prioritized and expedited review of agency-designated projects that are within the Army Corps' jurisdiction. Projects that might fall under this memorandum of agreement would be agency projects such as the Naturelake Fishway or the Ark Spillway, as well as projects that are championed by our public agency partners such as our local maintaining agencies, our reclamation districts, as well as Uba County Public Works. So those would be projects that might be eligible to fall under this agreement. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from the directors?
Not for me.
I have one. I have one that's kind of off-topic, and I want to see if maybe we could make this fit. In Hallwood, where I live, the Army Corps of Engineers requires a floodway permit, and it used to take two months and was free. Now it takes three years and costs $3,000. So I wonder if we could incorporate something like this to where we could do a blanket permit through Army Corps for Hallwood area, because if, you know, they keep requiring everybody to put their houses higher and higher. I paid personally for an engineer study from MBK back in 2008 or '09 that showed a house on five acres in Hallwood would back up waters, because it's a floodway, not a flood zone, an immeasurable amount, meaning wouldn't do anything. So I'd really like to see if there's any way we could, if the water agency could help. I've already got the county's been working on this, and with the state floodway, but Army Corps is the big holdup, so. This is my comment.
Yeah.
Maybe something we can look into in the future. Willie's just chomping at the bit to say something, so.
I'm not surprised by the comment. So what this does is this allows us to expedite work with the Army Corps by paying for staff time. So it doesn't add any additional exemptions to regulations, but if you are working with the county or landowners in Hallwood, for example, are working with the county, this would help expedite any work that the Army Corps of Engineers is doing associated with that effort. I will just caution all of us that in no way can we take this approval today and ensure or guarantee a benefit to a private landowner. It would have to go through something programmatic through the county, and it sounds like that's, you know, already underway. So we can get with the county and see if there's any way that this resolution today or this agreement with the Army Corps could help expedite the effort the county's going through.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? No? Okay. We entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve.
All second.
Okay, motion's been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Great. Motion passes. Managers' report.
Okay, so things are going well. New Buller's Bar is at elevation 1874.08, which is about 623,000 acre feet. We are now releasing water out of the low-level outlet. I'll let you know that what we found about two weeks ago is the streamliner device that is located at the entry of the low-level outlet. When we got the tunnel outage underway and went to start draining the tunnel, we found that the streamliner wasn't completely seated in its slots and was causing the anomalous harmonic that I reported at last board meeting. We have removed the streamliner, inspected the streamliner, inspected the slots and the intake with an ROV, a remote operated vehicle. We reinstalled the streamliner, ensured that it is in its slots, and now we are flowing water through the low-level outlet. The tunnel is now drained. We started draining the tunnel last Monday, and it was, draining was complete on Friday. The contractor is now engaged in actual work in the tunnel outage, and our crew is now engaged in work at Colgate Powerhouse and related facilities. So yes, there's been about a 12-day delay in the tunnel outage, but everything's, you know, now moving forward as planned. I'm happy to report that, yes, there's a little delay, but I think we'll be able to get the tunnel outage done by sometime in February.
Well, I think I speak for all of us when I say just hats off to our crew that worked so effortless, so much time, and put so much effort into getting that figured out. So major problem that far underwater, and they got it done. So thank you.
Thank you for that. I'll relay that to the team. Up at the power systems, the new facility in Oregon House, I'll probably be making the same report for another couple of months, but we're finalizing all the details, you know, winterizing the project, final landscaping, final testing and commissioning of like HVAC systems and alarm systems and things like that. So that'll probably be continuing for a little while. However, I will say, especially with this major construction work going on on the tunnel outage, it is a wonderful, wonderful facility. The location is perfect. You know, when we were going through investigation of what was going on with the low-level outlet, just having that, you know, central facility and conference room that we could all zip down to from the dam in 10 minutes and be in a conference room and have, you know, engineering drawings up on the screen and brainstorming on, you know, how we're going to fix the issue we had. It's a great facility. So again, I think the staff really wants to thank you guys for allowing them to construct it, and it's super functional. Let's see, on recreation, recreation season is over. The team's now basically winterizing all of the related recreation stuff, like the floating comfort stations and the water treatment plant. And we do plan to replace two tanks at the water treatment plant during the tunnel outage. We are getting water from North Uba Water District to serve our treated water facilities up there while the tunnel is out and the water treatment plant is out. On the electrical side, the electrical team has been working for the last few years, but intensely the last several months, in coordinating PG&E's work inside the Colgate Powerhouse that's planned during the tunnel outage. This is a major relay upgrade project that PG&E is doing, basically their transmission line protection that is housed in Colgate Powerhouse and has been housed there since we built it. They're doing some major upgrades at the same time we're doing the tunnel outage. That way, you know, while our units are down, they can kind of have free rein on what goes on inside the powerhouse. It took a lot of coordination to schedule that work in parallel with our work, but they're now in our powerhouse and making their upgrades. That's a huge accomplishment. I want to thank Will and all of our electrical crew, but Will has absolutely been coordinating the PG&E stuff, and we all know how PG&E scheduling goes, and there's times when it was very touch-and-go whether they're going to get this project started during our tunnel outage. So that's well underway. On the mechanical side, the team has some major work to do with primarily the turbine shut-off valves for both the Colgate units. It's major removal, repair, and reinstallation of those valves. They're like eight-foot diameter valves. They've gotten some of the hardware off while we're waiting for the tunnel to be trained, and I think that's going to go well. So that's well underway. As far as operation goes, obviously the Colgate units are shut down. Narrows one and two are operating, and we're putting out a little over 1,000 CFS into the lower Uba. Lower Yuba River out of Inglebry.
Willie, I had one question on that. Did it also take away the helicopter noise?
The helicopter noise is significantly minimized. It only occurs at a certain band of flow, and we're making sure that we operate outside of that band.
Okay.
And for everyone who's wondering, the low-level outlet has made a helicopter noise at certain flow ranges for decades. So it is a known condition that we're operating around. All right, well, we're entering the, you know, the fall and winter season. We saw a little precipitation last week. There might be some more later this week. You know, the report here says we're in like La Niña conditions. When I report on El Niño or La Niña conditions, I always say, you know, kind of take it for what it is. It's not a perfect predictor of what our winter's going to look like, so we'll just wait and see. On the human resources side, we do have the Director of Administration job description that you just approved out on the street, and that closes on October 31st. That is a position that will replace Terry Daly, who's retiring in December. She's currently the Assistant General Manager, and we've decided to replace that position with a Director of Administration. Under her current role as Assistant General Manager, she does the Director of Administration type of work for the agency. So we'll replace her currently with Director of Admin. We also have a new heavy equipment mechanic who started last week, Luke Miller, and we have a new temporary employee to help in our accounting department, Martha Alvarado. She started last week. On the comm side, we're actively promoting and preparing our Flood Risk Town Hall event next Wednesday, the 29th, at 5:00 at the 530 Building. We recently approved a sponsorship for the Rio del Oro Harvest Festival, which takes place October 24th, the Yuba Sutter-Calusa United Ways Spooktacular Run, taking place October 25th, and the Hegemony Hope Foundation's community-flagged football program. Jessica Nichols and Alex Bosch will be presenting, representing us tonight at the Fire Safe Council's Community Roundtable Event, where they'll be talking about the muscles prevention efforts and other general agency updates. And Dusty Smith had our dump truck and excavator out at the Dobbins Elementary Touch a Truck Event last week. Our upcoming meetings are November 4th, where we'll have a regular board meeting and an AVP meeting.
All right. Any questions? Okay, we will move on to directors' reports. Wayne?
Nothing for me.
I have a question for you, Wayne. Have you ridden the slide?
Many times.
Okay. I rode the slide Saturday night. Gets moving. Gary?
Well, I haven't ridden the slide yet, so it seems like I need to make a trip and take care of that. So thanks to staff for your amazing work on the tunnel outage and the low-level outlet and getting that figured out. So greatly appreciated. The only other thing I have is I'm looking forward tomorrow to joining Bear River School from Wheatland on the salmon expedition. So it looks like it's going to be nice weather and a good day for that. So and I don't think I've gone with Bear River yet, so I'm looking forward to it.
Reddick?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say thank you guys again for getting us onto those salmon expeditions. I went on one with two of our schools. It was Kynock Elementary and Covealod there combined. So it's kind of cool to see the little difference in culture across town, which is like one group of kids is all squared away, and their teacher had them in complete order, and the other ones acted like my son, and were like the typical second through fourth grader mentality, which was great. But they got, the kids got to learn a lot about the river and the watershed. They got to learn about a little bit of history on how things were created in our county, and I think it's just important we educate them on what our natural resources are so they can help preserve them and make good decisions as they grow up. So thanks, Ken, for getting me on that. I got a couple of things to plug here. So Habitat for Humanity is doing a Jimmy Carter and Rosalynn Carter work project called a Rural Rally, and it kicks off on October 26th and runs through the 30th. They're going to be rehabilitating a neighborhood in Marysville that's historically a pretty rough street. It's Pine Street. It's kind of across from the old Greyhound Station. So when you live next to the Greyhound Station in any town, it's kind of rough. Greyhound's not here anymore. Now it's High Sushi House, and now they're revitalizing the whole area. So they have a lot of volunteers to go out and rehab one house on Pine Street. They applied to do the whole neighborhood, but they only got the Rural Rally portion approved from the Rosalynn Carter project. So the idea is that they rehab one house, but they fix up all the other houses, landscaping, gutters, make everything presentable, and then in hopes in the future, they can land the big project, which would be out in Linda, and it'd be creating like 20 or 30 affordable housing units. They already have the land for it, and this is one of the ways that they can get the project completed. So I just encourage any way we can help them, whether it's promotion or if we want to donate or create a team. I know everybody's strapped for time because of all the projects going on, but I think it'd be a good opportunity for us to help the community. And all of these projects lead to people getting out of the river bottoms. That's how I'm connecting it. There's too many people living in the river bottoms still, and so if we create low-income housing, it opens up options for transitional housing, gets people out of the river bottoms. Doesn't take much to help, but they are having a kickoff event on October 26th at 12:00 p.m. right at Pine Street in Marysville, Pine and Fifth-ish. And then there's going to be just a ton of volunteers, and I asked our county if we could get some of our inspectors or buildings and grounds guys to come help with sheetrock and electric, electricians work. I would have asked you, Willie, but there, I know your guys are busy, busy. And then the last thing I have is Scarrysville's on October 31st. That's in downtown Marysville. If you guys, or if anybody has the opportunity to collect some candy to donate to that event, that'd be great. I know they've reached out for a sponsorship, and I guess that one got denied, but that's fine. But I would also like to try to see if we could maybe have a booth there, if that's possible, give out some water education information, maybe some flashlights and things like that. So if you could, let me know. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Seth?
Report?
All right. Do you know if it's going to rain Saturday or not? Whoever's watching the weather?
Oh.
I've got a, I'm voting for no rain. Trying to finish harvest.
I'll second that.
Can you tell us a little? I'm preparing for it and hoping it doesn't happen. Can you tell us what's going to be, what to expect at this event, so I can go out and tell people, hey, come to the event.
The event next Wednesday evening. Yeah, that's our public, I'll call it a public workshop about flood preparedness in Uba County. We'll have our local partners up there. We'll have poster presentations for about the first hour where you'll, the public can interact with the professionals in flood management, and we'll have, I'm not going to remember them all, but we'll have the sheriff there, we'll have Patrick there from RD784, we'll have a few of our folks and some others for about an hour, kind of just, you know, I'll call it a little bit of meet and greet and then ask questions at the poster presentation. And then we'll have about an hour and a half panel where we ask the panel questions about flood preparedness, levees, you know, hydrology in the state, how floods work in California, how we operate New Buller's Bar to control or try to control flows in the Lower Yuba River. That's about an hour and a half, and a question and answer session after that. We'll have like drinks and refreshments, and it's just an attempt to educate our local residents about flooding in Uba County and what we all do and how we all work together to prepare for floods, respond in a flood event, operate for floods. That's generally, John, what it is.
All right. I just, I'm going to post it on my social media, and then if people ask, I can explain it. I don't think I have anything else trying to finish up. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. We're going to take about a what, 15-minute break? Oh, we can't start till 10:00? All right. So we're going to adjourn this meeting at 10:15. We're going to be back for, what's the exact terminology of the next meeting?
YubaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges, Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.
Each week, local governments and schools make important decisions that have short-term and long-term impacts on our community and quite possibly on you. YubaSutter.live makes it easier for you to know what's going on. We livestream up to four local government meetings every Tuesday, important special meetings, Oliver's Public Utility District's Mondays and Thursday meetings, and town halls. To make it easier for you, we pull out informative sections and present them individually. For your information, our new series that posts Wednesdays right here on YubaSutter.live, subscribe to our YouTube channel, like and follow our Facebook page so you know when we're live and when we've posted something new. For your information, local government meetings made shorter, posting Wednesdays here on YubaSutter.live.